Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the wildest, wackiest circus this side of East Kern and tonight's Ridgecrest City Council meeting. Thank you for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Ms. Breeden.
Present.
If I'm present, we have a quorum.
Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. We do have one small change to the agenda. We will not be doing the presentation for Sergeant Brown this evening. Outside of that, is there any other amendments or changes to the agenda as presented?
No, sir.
Hearing none, do I have an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
One of us is gonna hit the wrong button there one day. Okay, if I can ask everyone to please stand for me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Captain Dampier, if you would leave this, please.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Rajaratnam.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity you have given to us to come into your presence. Lord, be with all of us today. Lord, as we have observed National Day of Prayer earlier this month, Lord, I ask you to pour out your love, life, and liberty on this country. Lord, let this country be a beacon of hope, a beacon of liberty, and a beacon of freedom to other nations, oh Lord. Lord, I pray for the leadership, give them your wisdom and discernment to lead this country. Lord, I pray for our Ridgecrest Police Department and all emergency services. Lord, as they put their lives on the line to protect this community and protect us and protect many lives, I ask you to bless them. I ask you to give them your protection, Lord. I pray for Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, EMT, Liberty Ambulance. Lord, thank you for the service they do. Lord, bless them abundantly. Lord, I pray for the city council. Bless each one of us and fill us with your grace so that the decisions we take, the deliberations we make, let them be useful and beneficial to this community, Lord. Bless each one of us here, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Okay, we have several presentations, so I'm actually gonna send our council down to the podium, and we will have a couple different groups to recognize this evening.
You are the first candidate.
Good evening, everyone. Do we have anyone here tonight with the Community Action Partnership of Kern? Great, going to come on up, sir. So tonight, it's my honor to give a proclamation of the City of Ridgecrest, California proclaiming May 2022 Community Action Month, whereas Community Action Partnership of Kern, CAPK, was established in 1965 and has made essential contributions to individuals, families across Kern County by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities, and whereas Community Action Partnership of Kern addresses underlying causes of poverty, alleviates the effects, and promotes dignity and self-sufficiency in the communities that we serve, and whereas Community Action Partnership of Kern delivered over 23 million pounds of food across Kern County 2021 through CAPK Food Bank. And whereas Community Action of Kern operates the Oasis Head Start Location in Ridgecrest, tending to the children within the community and providing a head start to their education, and whereas Community Action of Kern operates the Oasis Family Resource Center in Ridgecrest that serves as a hub for residents to obtain case management, food assistance, and access to a wide array of services. Now, therefore, the Ridgecrest City Council hereby proclaims May 2022 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication throughout the community. Proclaim this 18th day of May 2022, signed by our Mayor Eric Bruin, myself, Scott Hayman, Councilmember Kyle Blades, Vice Mayor Solomon Rajaratnam, and Councilmember Peggy Breeden. So I just want to thank you, sir, and it is, I can't tell you how important it is and how nice it is to have direct service to the community and what a, what a, what a big action it is for, for those that you serve, and a lot of, you know, service-oriented programs out in the, you know, across the nation or the state, you know, there's monies put in and there's, you know, trickle-down, but this is a very direct, you know, major improvement to people's lives and kids' lives in our community. So thank you very much, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up and?
If I may say it, you do.
Yes.
So I'm the supervisor of the Oasis Family Resource Center in Ridgecrest, and we opened a year ago. I want to thank the Ridgecrest City Council for declaring May as Community Action Month in Kern County. We, Community Action Partnership of Kern was established in 1965, and it is the official anti-poverty nonprofit under the Johnson, that was created under the Johnson administration, War on Poverty. We actually operate 17 programs in the, in the county. On the Oasis Family Resource Center, we provide education to family with children zero to five, but we also provide emergency assistance to family. And we also have the Head Start Program as our educational program to provide free, top-quality education for children. And we also have WIC, the Women Infant and Children Program, to provide food, nutrition, education, and parenting support. So the Cap Care Food Bank distributes more than 23 million pounds in the county, but in Ridgecrest, we partner with the Salvation Army where we bring food into the communities, as well as with the, some might call Episcopal Church that has a senior food distribution on a food pantry. We are, we have a 2-on-1 numbers, but we are, all doors are open at the Oasis. If you know anyone who needs help, send them to us. We do utility assistance where we provide people who struggle to pay their gas, electric bill. Soon we will be helping with water as well. And we have a, we have a reservation program where we help people improve the quality to increase the energy efficiency. So I really want to thank you. We could not do this without a partner in Ridgecrest community. We've seen a tremendous increase of both support on people utilizing our service, so I'm very excited about this partnership. Thank you.
It's good to picture right here.
Thank you.
They need to be up there.
Eric LeBarbie.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is a proclamation for the, of City of Ridgecrest, California honoring Emergency Medical Services Week, May 15th to 22nd, 2022. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Ridgecrest City Council, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, May 15th to 22nd, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong. We encourage the community to observe this week and appropriate programs, with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and extend a heartfelt thank you. If there is anybody from Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, I request them to come forward. And extend a heartfelt thank you to Liberty Ambulance and all first responders in this And extend a heartfelt thank you to the Kern County Fire Department and all the first responders in this community. And extend a thank you to the Ridgecrest Police Department and all the first responders. So Police Department.
You guys hiding back there?
We need the whole team. Oh, my God!
Okay. I'll refer it. Come. There we go. I rarely ever get to do that. I hardly ever run the show, and you guys all know that.
I will definitely come stand among the.
Come stand.
Yes.
I didn't know we were part of this.
You're gonna cheer yourself so you're feeling better. Yeah, see how they're doing? If you step forward, the gentleman in the back, step forward, step forward, and cheer your heads just a little bit, because if I can't see you in my camera, I can't see you.
Hey, now, everyone, hi.
I know.
This man right here with the baseball cap here, Gary. There you go. There you go. Very good. And the man right there. There you go. Better. Better. Good. Okay, you guys, huh?
They're so good.
Three different ones. Ready? One, two.
Say mac and cheese.
If you hold your places. Oh, my God. I'm like, do you want to do two more? And see, holding.
Very nice, very nice. Our grace, guys. Thank you, guys. So I want to say thank you for your valuable service to this community. You put your lives on line to protect this community and save lives, so we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Hey, I gotta ask, man. I don't know what you guys doing.
And so it's my pleasure to introduce a proclamation of City of Ridgecrest proclaiming May 2022 Motorcycle Awareness Month, and I appreciate all you guys being here. This is nice. Whereas Motorcycle Awareness Month is our opportunity to call attention to the safety issues affecting motorcycle road riding, which in turn encourages motorists to stay alert for motorcyclists throughout the rest of the year, and whereas motorcyclists are much more vulnerable to crashes than other drivers. In 2007, the mileage death rate for motorcyclists was 37 times greater than that for passenger car occupants, and whereas many multi-party collisions that involve motorcycles happen because a driver gets distracted or doesn't respect a motorcyclist right of way. Since motorcycles aren't as large as most other vehicles on the road, they can be a bit harder to see, and whereas riders need to take precautions as well. Take a defensive driving course, wear protective gear, and keep your bike in its best working condition. Also, be aware of any road hazards and dangerous weather conditions. I'm sure you guys need to be told that. Yeah, well, whereas throughout Motorcycle Awareness Month, let's encourage motorists to share the road with motorcyclists and be extra alert when they are nearby. Most of all, enjoy your ride and make it home again. Now, therefore, the Ridgecrest City Council hereby proclaims May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month, proclaimed this 18th day of May 2022 by the Mayor Eric Bruin, Mr. Scott Hayman, Mr. Solomon Rajaratnam, Ms. Peggy Breeden, and myself, Kyle Blades. Would anybody like to come up and say some words, or maybe all of you? You're welcome to come up.
So I'm not, I'm not riding every day like you guys are, but I've ridden, and I know that it's not if, it's when, right? Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Hey, no, thank you. Any words for the group?
Right on. Anything you guys want to say?
Yeah, we will, for sure.
You did it here. My bad, too, too. Where the receiving line, the wedding basket is right over here.
And if everybody would, please step up for a picture.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm here.
Okay.
You want us in or out? In, okay.
It's your turn. We're in?
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't we have a basic logic play? I know we do eventually. One, two, three. One more, one more. Thank you, guys, for having us. Stay safe. Everyone out there, stay safe, please. Well, I don't know. You guys probably say it, but the people around you, unfortunately. Sometimes. Thank you very much. Every now and then. One more to go, Pete. One more to go. You're almost there. One to go, please. Four. Well, I mean, can we just, should we just forget about this one? Oh, wait, no, you have a good staff. It's just you that's the problem.
Okay. So I get the fourth and last one, and that is a proclamation of the City of Ridgecrest, California recognizing National Public Works Week, and if you heard me, I was razzing our, our fantastic Public Works Director Travis Reed, but don't let him hear that I said fantastic. We have incredible employees that work in the Public Works Department making our roads in our community and the infrastructure that we depend on every single day, the best it can be, and it's my pleasure to recognize them. So whereas governmental employees, consultants, and contractors provide public work services for our community that are a vital and integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of the community is vital to the efficient operation of the public, I can't read what these things on, of the public work system, the bifocals aren't working, of the public work systems and programs such as water, streets, fleet maintenance, transit, building maintenance, wastewater treatment, and solid waste collection, and don't forget that last sentence, it's really important. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these infrastructure, facilities, and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals, and whereas the efficiency and effectiveness of these qualified and skilled professionals contribute to the quality of life that residents and visitors alike enjoy and rely upon. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council that we recognize and extend appreciation to our dedicated and skilled staff, consultants, contractors, and hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to the 21st as National Public Works Week, and be it further proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council request that all citizens and civic organizations acquaint, excuse me, acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work services to our community, and to recognize the contributions which all Public Works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, proclaim this 18th day of May 2022, myself and the rest of the council. And let me just go on to that one sentence that we always forget about the importance of public works. We always say public works, and we instantly think of the roads and the lights and those things that we are on every single day, but this team has done an amazing job of using spit and Band-Aids to keep a wastewater treatment facility operating for well past its lifespan, and we are super excited that hopefully in the years to come, when we are reading this proclamation or recognizing this group again, that we can continue to celebrate their incredible efforts to keep our wastewater treatment and solid waste collection under control and well-managed in this community, and we thank you for that. On behalf of the Public Works Department, do you have somebody here, or do we have to recognize you? Public Works Director Travis Reed, would you like to say a few words?
I've got plenty to say later.
Oh, okay. You don't even want to thank your staff, or, you know, maybe just, just?
As you guys can see, I'm new to this. I actually forgot last year, so it was amazing. They're like, hey, by the way, Public Works Week was last week, and I was like, oh, that's awesome. Thanks for telling me a week late. But anyways, no, I wouldn't be anywhere I'm at today if it wasn't for the guys I have at our wastewater treatment plant in the streets with our transit division and our building department. Our building department doesn't seem to get a lot of love because of, we've got a limited number of people up there, so anytime they're gone and I have to do something for people, it's a long wait. But they're second to none, and I wouldn't be able to accomplish half the things we've accomplished without them. So, thank you, guys.
Photo position one.
How about it? Twist in your body. Yep, got it. Twist it. There you go. Twist, 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 and follow him in your right. There, there you go. A little bit tighter. One, two, three. Okay, I'm gonna get you laughing. All right, you two.
You ready to all of them, huh? We need, we need one person professional around here. Sorry about that, but we've done a lot of this.
I was gonna introduce you, but, but I will now take the moment to ask for Captain Dampier to come up. Oh, hey, how are you?
So, I don't know if it was just me, but when she asked them to twist, I heard a lot of creaking up there. So I assume it's just the floor. But Mike Ogas, come on down here. So Officer Ogas is no stranger to coming up here and receiving lifesaving awards. He's a superhero. He's my superhero. His first one's gonna be easy. The second one's gonna be a little tougher, so we'll start out, on February 11th of this year, Mike Ogas was dispatched to an address on North Norma Street for a reported overdose. Dispatch had advised the subject was unconscious and unresponsive, and CPR was being started. Officer Ogas was the first officer to arrive on scene. He administered Narcan and began to administer rescue breaths to the victim. After several minutes of rendering medical aid, the victim's condition started to improve. Liberty Ambulance and Kern County Fire Department personnel arrived and transported the victim to RRH, where he would later made a full recovery. Thanks to Officer Ogas, his quick actions and decisive actions directly saved the victim's life. Officer Ogas should be commended for his efforts during this intense and stressful situation. His quick thinking and actions, along with his dedication to helping, not only saved the victim's life, but positively represented in the Ridgecrest Police Department. So, congratulations, Mike.
Build a house here by the end of his career.
Okay, I'm not gonna read the second one, I'm just gonna talk about it. So February, I think it was about a week before this one, while most of us was watching the Super Bowl, Mike Ogas has an 18-month-old young man in his arms doing CPR, okay? The young man was found in a small body of water in the backyard of a family residence, and Mike and, Cory, come on down here, too, please. Ryan, come here. You know, Officer Rinaldi, Officer Ogas were, were the first on the scene, and they, they immediately saw that this young man was in, was in dire straits. Mike picked up this kid, and he's doing CPR in his arms, getting into Cory's vehicle, driving, they meet the ambulance halfway between here and the hospital. Mike jumps out with, with the young man and gets in the ambulance and is continuing doing CPR. God, I wasn't even there, and this is hard, man. I'm so proud of this guy. I mean, I mean, we had the opportunity just a couple weeks ago to talk to this kid, you know, and see him, see his eyes, and it just comes down to, for this guy directly and for the people around him, is they are able to save this, this boy's life. And, you know, the other one was an overdose, and, and life's important, but when we deal with kids, we all have kids, it's, it's really rough. And like I said, I'm so proud of all of you, and everyone needs to be proud of these guys, so thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, council. Each one of these means a lot for what we do. I enjoy my job, I really love my job. I really enjoy working with these guys over here, especially John back there in the corner. Obviously, as Captain Dampier said, we can't do this alone, right? I had two great partners, also Matt Roland, who's not here, right, who backed me up. John's actually the paramedic that I met up with that day, and it just goes to show that I'm just one cog in the machine that makes things work. Makes me very proud of this community, makes me very proud of where I work and the agencies we work with. It took a very bad day and turned it very positive, and I'm glad I was part of that. So, thank you, and happy EMS Week, guys.
Captain. Hey, Captain. Where'd you want us?
Where do you want us?
Do you want us out of the way, or?
You want us up there? Come on.
I think, I think Ogas has.
Officer Rinaldi. And your first name is? Cory. C-O-R-Y. Officer Brown. Ryan. Okay, so, yep, I'm only gonna. and receiving lifesaving awards. He's a superhero. He's my superhero. This first one's gonna be easy. The second one's gonna be a little tougher, so. We'll start out on February 11th of this year. Uh, Mike Ogas was dispatched to an address on North Norma Street for a reported overdose. Dispatch had advised the subject was unconscious and unresponsive. And CPR was being started. Officer Ogas was the first officer to arrive on scene. He administered Narcan and began to administer rescue breaths to the victim. After several minutes of rendering medical aid, the victim's condition started to improve. Liberty ambulance and Kern County Fire Department personnel arrived and transported the victim to RRH, where he would later made a full recovery. Thanks to Officer Ogas, his quick actions and decisive actions directly saved the victim's life. Officer Ogas should be commended for his efforts during this intense and stressful situation. His quick thinking and actions along with his dedication to helping not only saved the victim's life, but positively represented in the Ridgecrest Police Department. So congratulations, Mike. Build a house here by the end of his career. Okay, I'm not gonna read the second one. I'm just gonna talk about it. So February, I think it was about a week before this one. While most of us was watching the Super Bowl, Mike Ogas has an 18-month-old young man in his arms doing CPR. Okay? The young man was found uh in a small body of water in the backyard of a family residence. And uh, Mike and uh Cory, come on down here too, please. Ryan, come here. You know, Officer Rinaldi, Officer Ogas were, were the first on the scene and they, they immediately saw that this young man was in, was in dire straits. Mike picked up this kid and he's doing CPR in his arms, getting into Cory's vehicle, driving. They meet the ambulance halfway between here and the hospital. Mike jumps out with, with the young man and gets in the ambulance and is continuing doing CPR. God, I wasn't even there. This is hard, man. I'm so proud of this guy. I mean, I mean, we had the opportunity just a couple of weeks ago to talk to this kid, you know, and, and see him, see his eyes. And uh, it just comes down to, for, for this guy directly and for the people around him is they were able to save this, this boy's life. And um, you know, the other one was an overdose and, and life's important. But when we deal with kids, we all have kids. It's uh, it's really rough. And uh, like I said, I'm so proud of all of you and uh, everyone needs to be proud of these guys, so thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Council. Each one of these means a lot for what we do. I enjoy my job. I really love my job. I really enjoy working with these guys over here, especially John back there in the corner. Obviously, as Captain Dampier said, we can't do this alone, right? I had two great partners, also Matt Rowland, who's not here, right? Who backed me up. John's actually the paramedic that I met up with that day. And it just goes to show that I'm just one cog in the machine that makes things work. Makes me very proud of this community. Makes me very proud of where I work and the agencies we work with. It took a very bad day and turned it very positive. And I'm glad I was part of that. So thank you and happy AMAS Week, guys.
Captain. Hey, Captain. Where'd you want us?
Where do you want us?
Do you want us out of the way or?
I think Ogas has.
Okay, so um, yep. And only gonna cure your heads a little bit. There we go. And then we're gonna bring Peggy in. And um, yeah, Solomon, Solomon. Just put you on this side so we're not so crowded off. There we go. Very good. Very good. Very good. One, two, three. Officer, if they have to, like, you know. Uh, just a little bit. Here we go. A little bit more.
Sorry, I was watching. I was watching, I was watching the firemen. I'm sorry. I was, I was.
Okay, one more. What did you say? Okay, got you.
I was, I was, I heard beep, 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 and it's all, then jump up on. There you go.
Yeah, as I say, if you guys wanna go, you might be the time.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Safe rides, everyone. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who's doing so much, so great service for our community. We appreciate it.
I was going to say, this is the second, seventh time Officer Ogas got this award, so that's great. So that means he saved seven lives.
He has saved seven lives. He's an incredible officer. He is, he is. That is the fun part of our job. So nice to recognize the incredible people we have in this community and then also just so much hard work that's put in. They were all very respectful and nice, except for Travis. It was spectacular. So next item is um, public comment. If items not on the agenda, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. We'll begin with comments from the floor. Is there any public comment from the floor?
Good evening. It's right in my face. Um, hello, everyone. Um, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. My name is Laura Avila and I just wanted to come and introduce myself to you. I am running for Kern County Assessor Recorder. So um, I have been out in Ridgecrest for a little bit in the last couple of weeks, getting to know, know this great city and wanted to introduce myself to those that I have not met yet. I'll tell you a little bit about me. So I was raised here in Kern County. Um, I've established my career here. I have three beautiful children and I've been married for 20 years to my husband. I am also a patron of St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Catholic Church in Bakersfield, where I teach religious education. Um, I have 15 years' experience with the Assessor's, Assessor's Office. I started as a low-level appraiser, worked my way up, and for the last two years, I've been serving as your Assistant Assessor. Right when COVID happened is when I took over. So it was a major learning curve, but we made it through. We were one of the first county departments to reopen after COVID, shut us down, and it was a huge accomplishment for our office. And I'm very proud that I was part of that. We live in a unique, beautiful, thriving area of California. We're lucky to be surrounded by agriculture, powerhouse corporations, and unique independent businesses. Property values are soaring right now, benefiting the homeowners of Kern County. Yet even with these incredible boosts to our property values, thanks to Proposition 13, we are not overtaxing our homeowners and pricing them out of where they live. Kern County is still one of the most reasonably priced locations in our great state and allows individuals of all ages to either become first-time homebuyers, to invest in income property, or to sell their holdings to invest somewhere else. My background actually started in real estate when I received my degree from Fresno State in Real Estate and Land Economics. I have a fascination and an interest in property ownership to advance an individual's financial standing and want to provide as much insight and fairness to property owners as possible. This investment in fairness is ultimately what led me to where I am today, to the Assessor's Office. I'm sure you know what an assessor does, but just in case, in very broad terms, what the assessor does is we take all those tax laws, all those laws in our state constitution, and we implement them fairly inequally to determine your property value that your taxes are based upon. I don't generate your bills. That's the auditor controller. And I certainly don't take your money. That's the tax collector. But this, I think it's an important distinction. And while the Assessor Recorder doesn't charge or collect money, I will continue to be a staunch defender of Proposition 13 and a trusted taxpayer advocate. You will always find me committed to Kern County taxpayers while abiding by the numerous and complicated tax laws that we follow. I'm on your side to determine the fairest and ultimately the best value for your property so that your taxes are not excessive on your pocket. We want to be spot-on with our values, with our assessments of your property value to make your life as a property owner the easiest when it comes time to tax collection. For tax collection, excuse me. I often get asked, why are you running? I'm running for Assessor Recorder because I believe that our county deserves an Assessor Recorder that knows how to lead. In the last two years as your Assistant Assessor, I've been learning the job, showing up, committing to this office and to the citizens it serves day in and day out. I run the day-to-day operations of the office and oversee the 87 chief appraisers, supervisors, appraisers, auditor appraisers, title process and valuations clerks, and internal HR staff. Besides the experience I've already have with this position, I'm a leader with conservative principles. My commitment as a taxpayer advocate will remain steadfast. And as a, as a mother and a Kern County resident, I will always do what's best for Kern County residents. So again, my name is Laura Avila and I'm running for Kern County Assessor Recorder. I thank you for your time tonight and for your service to the city of Ridgecrest. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, do you have a flyer or website or anything?
I, I do. And if I can, I can pass one out to everybody. Okay.
Thank you, Laura. And uh, we'll get those passed around. Is there any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the phones? We'll give it about 15 seconds just to make sure that nothing else has passed. These are really good cards. I, I, I might have even stolen the idea from her. Might have. Not sure. Thank you, that. Seeing no other public comment? Public comment section will be closed. Next will become council announcements. We'll go right to left. Peggy, any council announcements?
Yes. I don't know how many of you know, but in November, there's gonna be an election. So just in case you hadn't figured out that I am termed out, so my seat is open. We have other openings on the city council and for mayor and that people that are going to run or considering running. I would like to make a proposal. Since Kyle and I are not up for reelection, we would, we would like.
Yeah, Solomon.
And, and, and Solomon. Sorry, I don't know.
Just point out that he doesn't have to do this either. It's just me and Scott that have to do this process.
Solomon, I just thought for sure you were running again. My apologies. Okay, Solomon doesn't, I decreed it. Solomon doesn't have to run, everybody. So he's already here. But we wanted to ask if those people inside this community would like to come out and talk about what the city does, how we can do it better, how you think you can do it better? Because we need some good, strong candidates. People that know the community, that understand what's needed. And we would like, and I don't know, I know that you may have known in the past, we did coffee with council. Since we can only do it with two of us, I would like to have you to meet with two of us and talk about to city staff, to us, what's going on? What do you think could be better? Learn what's happening. And as we listen to you and as we understand what you think may be good for this community, we all are going to grow. So consider your opportunity to run for city council and the only restrictions are that you must live inside the boundaries of the city of Ridgecrest. And you can't be 10 years old. So as we do this, we want you to think about what you can do to make this community better and to quit complaining about it and take the oath to say, I'm gonna stand up and be counted because I believe in the city of Ridgecrest. And we can help you. We can learn from each other and we can learn from staff. So I would like to make that as an item that would go on the agenda so that we could, we can make this a separate committee for the next time. I'd like you to be thinking about that. And this is a good opportunity to learn from, from us, but for us to learn from you too. So thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Brean, I, I do not know if we need to make this a committee. We could just arrange coffee with council. Staff could, you know, pick a location and help arrange it and then facilitate the advertisement.
However, we can make it happen and you all know best. You and the attorneys know best, so.
I mean, does it, does it have to be coffee? Can it be over a beer?
It can be whatever you want. As long as there's only two of you, it can be whatever you want.
I'm just joking. That was a joke.
And, and I, and, and that's why I was just making sure. I don't think we can agendize it because it's, it's, it's election-based. But, but more importantly, the second was, I think anybody out there, any one of us would always be more than welcome to talk to you.
Exactly.
And I'm gonna add one more thing and, and I'm not trying to interrupt Peggy, but if you are out there listening to Peggy, can you please add one sentence to the end of it? And that is that if you're interested in serving the best interests of all of Ridgecrest, not yourself or a special interest or a small group, we, all five of us, the best thing that's happened to this council is that all five of us understand that we are here to represent the entire community of Ridgecrest. And I would hope that, that, that anybody out there who has that in your heart, please come talk to us.
I'm done.
Okay. Scott?
No comments.
Um, I don't have any comments other than to commend um, what was an awesome open house with the RPD and the, the Police Department Awards and the, the dog demonstrations. And Toyota of Ridgecrest did a great job with Movies in the Park. It was a, it was an awesome evening to be out here and to be part of the community. And I got the chance to, to hold council with a, with a five-year-old. It was wonderful. There's nothing better than, than seeing that excitement. So uh, just kudos to Toyota of Ridgecrest for their support of our Movies in the Park. Kudos to the department, the, and all the officers for getting out there and, and opening their house up to everyone. And then all of the community groups, cert. Um, I mean, uh, the, the animal shelter. I mean, everyone was out here that has some role in public safety and it was awesome to have them out here. The vehicles, the ambulances, the ATVs, just eh, nothing better than those types of days to show our community how much we, we all work together. And uh, it was a great time. Falling on my back, not such a good time, but everything else was spectacular.
I want to apologize for missing the last meeting, so I'm glad to be back here again. So I want to congratulate Mr. Steve Morgan for getting the Key to the City Award. He really deserves that. He has served this community for a long time and he was involved in most of the things. I was associated with him through my children who participated in the Lions Club Student Speaker Contest. So he really, he really deserves that and I wish him good luck in his relocation, wherever he is going. And I watched the video recording of the meeting in totality. And I want to commend Public Works Director Travis Reed for a job done in a very good manner in explaining the, uh, what is it called? Infrastructure Management Services Project to crack map, right? Crack, yeah. Crack map the city, all the streets of the Ridgecrest. So you did an awesome da, job. You're very thorough in what you're talking. So thank you very much for being there for us and for your hard work and for your thoroughness. Really appreciate that. And I want to tag along with what Mayor Bruin said about the RPD open house. I want to touch base especially on the awards. So our police officers go unnoticed for their hard work. Some, we rarely think about our police officers unless we, we need their help or unless we have a ticket or somebody is hurt. We don't really talk, think about them. That is very unfortunate. They do their hard work and they are, they put their lives on the line to save our lives. So like Officer Ogus, Ogus. This is the seventh time he got the award. So we really, I was really excited to see all those officers get those recognitions. And I'm pretty sure they had a great sense of pride in themselves. I want the officers to know that the entire council is very proud of our officers and thank you very much for all your services. And I have a long list. I don't know.
That's okay. Go on, go on.
Uh, I want to sincerely thank Ridgecrest Regional Hospital for their hard work, especially during the past two and a half years, putting their lives at risk and working relentlessly to save the lives of COVID-infected people. So thank you very much, Ridgecrest Regional Hospital and the Liberty Ambulance for their services to this community. And if Jim Suvarci, CEO of the hospital, is listening to this, I want you to know the entire city council really appreciates your leadership and your hard work to make things happen at this hospital. Thank you very much, sir. And lastly, I want to say one more thing. Mayor Bruin spoke at Rotary Club of Chayana Lake today. So as always, he did an excellent job. So he talked about the future of our city and mainly focused on public safety and retention of officers. So I just want the RPD to know, we are for you and we have been working for you. And we want this community to know that you are doing a great job. So he passed on that message and I think uh, the audience got that message there. So thank you. And he closed the meeting with a personal note. I don't want to say that, so. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
See Facebook. No comments. Okay. Uh, next is our consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar for today. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and enacted by one motion unless pulled by a council member or member of the public. Our one item is item number four, Proposed Action to Approve Draft Minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Regular Meeting, dated May 4th, 2022, the greatest day of the year. Is there any other, is there any changes or amendments to the minutes? Do I have a motion for approval of the, I'm, I threw that completely out.
I'm like, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes?
Wait, I can't. Is there any member of the council which wishes to have an item pulled? Is there any member of the public which wishes to have the item pulled? Hearing none, is there, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
There is a motion on the floor.
There is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
But I had to go back because I have to ask the public if they want to pull.
Of course.
Trying to learn this stuff.
Five ayes, motion carries.
It's only taken me two years to still screw up. Okay, item number five is uh, our discussion items item is a resolution to award a professional services. Can you bring that chair back for yourself? A professional services, a resolution to award a professional service agreement with the engineering firm MKN and Associates. the engineering firm MKN and Associates in the amounts of $80,971 to provide trunk line assessments and project recommendations for the primary plant influent collection lines. Mr. Reed?
So as you guys all know, July 5, 2019, we had a pretty major event. I got married.
Did you get married on the same day as you?
Yeah, I was in Bama the day it happened. But anyways, we had the earthquake. In our scramble to get things done after the earthquake, we did the necessary CCTV videos of all the sewer lines, but with that, we forgot to have the ones on the base analyzed. I don't know if I should necessarily say forgot, or it was just kind of taken as a, for an oversight. So we have two major pipes that feed everything to the plant that have not been looked at, and by have not been looked at, I mean ever. So we feel.
And just for the record, what is an influent?
Influent is when you flush your toilet, it's the stuff that comes into the plant. So.
How old is the plant?
I think it was built in 1946?
Forty-three.
So forty-three is when it was built, so it's older than I am and older than you are, Councilman Blades.
Older than pretty much anybody in the room.
Yes, yeah. So it's been long overdue, so we've got a placeholder in the contract. We have a lot of manholes that we have a tough time accessing because they don't get accessed very often. I didn't have the capability to go through the videos beforehand to see what chunks were missing, but I didn't feel that putting an actual hard number to what that CCTV portion would be if we need to do extra was appropriate at this time. So essentially, what we're asking for is we're asking for the placeholder for the total amount, but we would like to come back and revise it if necessary, depending on the availability of video, quality of data. There's a lot of new technology out there. As you guys know, I'm trying to find new technology. They've got some new robots that you can put down a manhole, and it can run through and scan and create a three-dimensional point cloud, kind of like the 3D scanning that we're doing of our roads. So you can visually and use computer software, measure lateral offsets, measure vertical offsets. So before I pinned our teeth down and said, okay, this is what we're going to do, I wanted to be able to have some flexibility to go after and look at other forms of technology to get better data that we can use to analyze the influent pipes. So the influent pipes are literally the end-all before they get to the plant. You've got one that runs basically from the business park across the base of the plant, and then you've got another one that runs from La Mill and Ridgecrest Boulevard across the Navy Base to the plant. So we want to make sure that if we're putting a new plant in, it seems pretty pointless to put a new plant in if we can't get the collection system affluent from the collection system but influent to the plant, to the plant. So we just want to make sure that we have a complete look at all of our collection system and major trunk lines and make sure that we don't have any issues and sewage spills or anything that we have to report to the state while we're in this process of trying to build a new plant. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
I have a few basic questions, because not everybody can see all the data that's in our package here, so I guess it would just be, you have the amount up there, but where, what fund is the money coming from?
It's coming from the wastewater enterprise fund.
And the extent of the data that you're collecting is just video, right? Is there anything else you need to do while you're in there?
At this time, we have a, we have a pretty in-depth capital improvement plan that we're working on, and this is, I think, the final step to adding to it, and we're hoping to either encompass this into the capital improvement plan or maybe even, I don't know, I still have to kind of try to dive into it, see what kind of work we're going to have to do to get these up to par. A lot of them are old vitrified clay pipes and vitrified clay from sulfur offgassing and things like that. You can see some pretty good decay, so we're going to kind of leave that up to, I'm going to say, chance, because I don't know how bad the actual trunk lines are, but we're looking to put this into our capital improvement plan that we're about 90% complete on right now, so that way we can bring at least one, if not two, projects to council every year. So we're actually taking care of our system that's going to get the sewage to the plant.
And then timeline, right? You've got to get them on contract, but.
Correct. We're trying to get them under contract, probably two or three months to do the assessment. We'll probably have, I would say, a 60 or 30 or 60% design report for potential projects that need to be done, and hopefully, within a month and a half, two months, we'll know if we need to do any additional scoping, so.
And what's the end product look like? It's just the data collected from the video?
So the end product would be a complete plan with projected projects, how we should do it, and also the, any additional data that we need to collect. So hypothetically, in a perfect world, we would just be analyzing the data we already have, but there's, I mean, there's some manholes even in city limits that I've myself have tried to pop and beat on for hours that I can't get into. So it, we're, like I said, we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive, and if we have an issue with one of these lines, the reaction is going to be substantial. So we want to make sure that we nip that in the button now and fix any problems that we have before we have a catastrophic failure.
Thank you.
So Mr. Reed, so we already did the CCTV and we have the videos, so we are going, whatever the company, MKN, so they are going to analyze these videos first.
Correct. Correct. So we provided them with all the video data we had collected from 2015 and also collected after the earthquake in 2019 to 2020. So they will analyze the pipe runs that are necessary to determine what decay or degradation we've seen in a five-year period, also as well as estimated thicknesses from when it was installed to what it is now, points where we think, and we rate them based off of severity. We have a one through a five, five being the most critical. An example of a five is we have one five that's up in this yellow area that's going to get fixed with our Phase 2 sewer problem. That's what we call a slipped joint. So a pipe actually pulled itself out of a joint partially, so if we get any other ground movement up there, it'll be really easy for that to become a full fracture. And so that's a five, and a one would be like a hairline crack in it. A three is typically stuff we would see with like a protruding lateral. Most of our stuff out there, since it is a trunk line, they don't have laterals. It's just the collection system coming into it, so it's all done by fitting. So a three would probably be more like a lateral offset of a couple millimeters or something like that.
So you have a placeholder for $43,356 to do the further videotaping and maybe if there is some debris cleaning and all that stuff, right?
Correct.
So, so the existing videos, did they show any blockage or anything? Do you know? I know you were married at that time, you must be busy.
So the existing videos didn't show anything that, what needed a potential plan of action right at that moment, but they actually, they didn't analyze the data in a complete engineering manner to be able to say, hey, you've got a lateral shift here of X amount. It was more of a, we looked at it, things were flowing, it's working, we don't have any immediate problems that need to be concerned. And with the slim pickings for staff we have right now, it's really tough to dedicate one person with all the projects we're trying to get out to just be sitting reviewing videos and noting when, where deficiencies are and going through them and then trying to categorize them and put them into a project form. So this is really what we're using, is we're relying on Mike Nunley and associate staff expertise in the engineering field, because they've done this for multiple agencies across California to help us with that rating project and help us develop and package things into a project format.
Did MKN do this project, I mean, do this study in 2019 after that quake?
No, sir. Houston Harris was the company who did the videoing. We hired Will Dan to do the assessment of all the lines and develop a capital improvement plan for the collection system within the city limits, but the portions that were on the base were not included due to limited access, due to things like that. And with all the new treatment plant work going on and MKN's role in that, they've got access on the base, it just seemed like a logical fit to have them do this portion of the work.
So if there is a need to do the cleanup, so where do we dispose of that debris?
So the debris, so the trucks have a vector system or a jetting system, and a lot of times what happens is these jets are set up to where they create hydraulic pressure in the lines, and any debris or anything that needs to be cleaned will get broken up and either transported down through the plant, or if there's a significant blockage, they put things in the manhole to catch the debris, so it will break it up, or if it forces it out, you can scoop it up and pull it out of the manhole, and then it will either go to our plant for, depending on what's in it, for hazardous disposal. We'll have to do some testing and things like that to verify what's in it. You can either take it to one of the hazardous waste dumps, or it can go through our treatment plant based on what it, what the constituents are.
I'm just trying to understand the process, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I ask? Can I go back, have a go back real quick? That is, you indicated when you were originally talking, the material of the pipes were made of, easy to decay, was it clay? What are they made out of now? What do we, what's the standard in the industry?
So it depends on a lot of what you're doing, what kind of soil you've got. If you see a lot of expansion, contraction, so a lot of clays, some that are not, oh, what's the term, corrosive? You'll see ductile iron in places, but the majority of desert agencies use a polyvinyl chloride, so a PVC-style pipe, which.
Because our soil is corrosive, right?
Our soil is very corrosive, yes. So we typically spec a PVC pipe, so if we have any sections that need to be what we call point repair, remove and replace a 10-foot section, they have these specialized rubber couplings that slip over the clay, and then we put a PVC section in where we are doing the repair.
And my last question was, you talked a lot about slip joints and what that movement is, and of course, with the like, with the constant seismic activity, is there just a certain amount of that movement that's going to happen? It's just going to happen anyways, and you're, and it's okay? It's designed into the, it's engineered into the design already?
So yes and no. So it's engineered to have deflection at joints, not so much engineered to be deflected in the pipe, because clay as a material is a very brittle material, but PVC, as we all know, is pretty ductile. So that's why with earthquake movement and seismic activity, a lot of times the choice of pipe is PVC because it is ductile, because it does allow it to flex and bend a little bit here or there. So it's all going to be dependent on what we see, like I said, but I would assume that the majority of our, if we do any point repairs, would be PVC. But from my experience and what we've seen out here, I would see most of our stuff, how we fix things, is we do what's called CIPP, which is cast-in-place. So they essentially take steam, they have a plastic liner that slips inside the pipe, they use steam and pressure, they pressurize that up, it's hot, and it kind of makes the plastic go into a molten style, and it presses it out against the wall, and it binds to it, so now you've got like a PVC-coated pipe. So it's a very less labor-intensive, more cost-effective way if you've got big sections you need to do work on, like if you've had half flow within a pipe and it's sort of deteriorate the bottom, you can do that cast-in-place pipe, so that way you can coat the whole pipe and add life and longevity to the system.
Cool. Thanks, Charles.
So my only thing was, a pretty simple one, which is, once again, we have said that our goal is to not react, but to be proactive, and this is another example of that. Am I correct? This is proactive action, so that when we build that wastewater plant, we are building the best possible unit we can.
Correct.
To services community, not just for a year, not for five years, but 1943, it's 2022, somehow we've gotten 80, nearly 80 years of use of this unit. I don't hope that we're back here 80 years from now waiting around to fix it again, but we will get the solid lifespan that we expect from our wastewater treatment plant if we make sure that we do the proactive steps now, because if there's a big pipe that needs to be replaced, and it's beyond repair, or it's beyond a PVC coating or something else, we can put that in our wastewater capital improvement project, and we can identify these needs now, especially because they're going to have to reroute lines as it is.
Correct, and that was one of the other concerns that we have, is whenever you do a big plant project like this and your plant is moving, you're going to have connections to old pipes, and anytime you get into degraded materials, there's a lot of times that the dirt is what's holding the pipe together, so when you expose it, these pipes collapse. So we want to make sure that when they go to dig and get into this, if necessarily they know, hey, we need to replace this portion, or who knows? Maybe we go in and we replace the portions that we need to replace before the plant's built, so that way they've got something decent to tie into.
To tie into, yeah. Maybe we fix it before the tie. And also, with the plant project taking a good couple of years, I mean, as wastewater, I think I heard wastewater plant, I think in the first year I was in town, in 2004, and so, I mean, I mean, everyone out there says, you know, we've been, the fees, and yeah, we're ready, we've been working on this for a long, long time, and guess what? If we can do it right, and we can get some of these things done and be able to say, these are things that we're proactively getting ready, because this is a big, big project, that's positive progress, that's proactive progress, and we never know what grant, program, opportunity is being missed because we weren't being proactive that we might be able to grab a hold of, because we are being proactive, and we have, maybe we have a shovel ready that we need 100 yards of pipe replaced, and we know exactly where it is, and that gives us the opportunity to have great communications and relationships with the base in terms of those needs or with other agencies. The fact is that being proactive allows you to take actions before the influent hits the fam.
You're exactly right, and I think the.
Oh, that was bad.
That was good.
Balump bum.
All right, all right.
Mr. Raymond?
How are you going to follow that up, Scott?
You can't.
Mine's pretty simple. I think you already answered my question, that was how any repairs that would be, need to be made on lines that are in proximity of the new construction of the, of the new wastewater treatment plant, you know, how that would coincide with it, but it sounds like you're looking into that and.
And that's the hope. We hope that it's, the pipes aren't in such a bad condition that we need to do a replacement project, but if we do, it's better to know now, because then that's something we could write into the contract as part of the plant, and then mobilization and demobilization of their people and equipment, I mean, that's almost 20% of the cost of your contract, just getting them here upfront is 20%. So if we could do multiple projects under one banner, you're basically paying 80% for that project, because you're not paying the MOB and DMOB in for all this stuff to do it.
So kind of looking at from when the plant's being built, what lines, as they scope out from that plant out, you know, could be tied in.
Absolutely.
Coincide, you know.
All be stuff that we look at, and that's part of the, why we think it's benefit to have the same engineering firm that's already doing work on the base with us, aid us in this, because their hands are already in this.
Right. Whereas some of the other lines, if they're not too bad, those, I mean, they're going to be an impedance one way or the other, whether it's with the new plant or the existing plant, the, some of the blockages are, not so much blockages, but some of the, you know, let's just say the material coming out of the lines, would it affect the new plant in any negative way? Would it be better to get, you know, that stuff out of the lines and before sending it down to the new plant?
You know, most of the time, if it's anything that's of significance, most of the time what you see that gets, causes blockage is you've got a roughness, your pipe is smooth at one point, and then from liquid flowing over it or from offgassing, you get a roughness, and it'll hold up toilet paper, and then it catches this debris, and then it just creates a kind of a dogpile effect, literally. So most of the stuff that we see when you go in and they do the high-pressure jetting, it breaks the majority of it up. So going to the plant, not so much that of a big deal, but I think that the major concern here is, is we don't want to have a problem with one of these lines. I mean, to plan, you have a major collection line that's going to take in, one of them takes in three-quarters of the sewage from the city, so to plan diversions, to go from manhole to manhole, takes a lot of time. You've got pumps, you've got hoses strung, you've got backup pumps sitting there, because you've got this manhole literally blocked off, and if one pump goes out, you have to be able to start another pump right then and there, because you've got two minutes and sewage is coming out all over the ground, so.
And some of the lines, will it interfere with road repairs, or roads that have already been repaired?
So we're taking a very proactive approach on that now, too. So all of our new paving that we're doing for CY22, that you guys will hear about next week, and for like Ward, we've already done an. and for like Ward, we've already done an assessment of all those lines. And we already have the sewer work as a separate bid schedule included in that project. So that way the contractor that gets awarded that work, the first thing they'll do is they're going to go in and repair any repair that needs to happen under that road. So we're not digging up a road that we paved two, three, five years ago. And I got to say, the other thing that's been great is the Water District has been out in front of, and I know we've had a lot of issues with when we've paved, the vibration from the paving causes leaks. They've already got, I think, 60% of the roads that we have, excuse me, coming up this year in our paving program, they have their infrastructure replaced for all their services. So it's, we're all moving in a positive and a good direction. And that was one of the big things of why we thought it was key to do this crack mapping so we can better project where our paving is going to be, so we can give a schedule to all the utility companies so they can plan their infrastructure repairs before we get there.
Very good. That's all I have. Thanks.
It's amazing when you're last, you, most of your questions have already been answers. I would just like to ask one. When, during the earthquake, when we had the raw sewage flowing out and the issues that were addressed and taken care of by our tremendous staff, I'm appreciative of the fact that we have been able to hold it together this long. In the timeframe before we come to build the new one, are we going to see any major issues that you can see? Will you be able to see that from this? And will we be able to address those issues proactively?
That's exactly what this is for. The one spot that we haven't really taken a good, hard look at are these two major transmission lines. And that's a water term, I'm sorry, these trunk lines. And we're trying to make sure we cover all of our bases. We do have a big sewer project coming that, one of the main trunk lines that runs through the city comes from about Argus, heads south on China Lake Boulevard to California, goes down California to La Mil, and then goes across the base. So we are about 90% complete with the plans and the design for how we're going to fix that. So that is a big project that'll be included in the budget this upcoming year, as well as we put a placeholder in for what we told them we wanted to budget for actually following this capital improvement plan that we're coming up with. Now, obviously, that plan with what they're developing right now, the year one project, if we have a major problem with some of these pipes that we're looking at now, the year one project might become a year two project so we can figure out and do what we need to do on these lines. But if we don't have a plan and we don't know what we need to fix and where we need to spend money, it's pretty hard to go, I don't like to just willy nilly go out there and spend money and, oh, we're going to replace this line even though it's okay. We don't want to do that. We want to fix the spots that need it. So...
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We are done with council comments. Is there any comments from the floor? Seeing none. Is there any comments on the phone? Seeing none. I'll give it a few seconds. We'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Are there any other final council questions, comments, or clarifications? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for approval of the authorization to award a professional services agreement with the engineering firm MKN Associates for an amount of $80,971?
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number six. It looks like you're going to stick up here for another. Okay?
One more.
He likes to hear himself talk.
Next is item number six. This is an authorization for the city manager, Ron Strand, to sign the notice of completion for the fiscal year 21 Measure V paving, various streets project for the city clerk to file the notice of completion and for city staff to release retention in the amount of $76,671.66 to the contractor, Nego Earthworks, within 30 days after recognition of the notice of completion. Mr. Reed?
So this is the final piece of the puzzle for the project that we brought to you last time.
Okay.
This is basically now that you authorized the funds that we did spend prior, this is us basically filing, saying the project is complete. And I do vow to make one promise to you guys. I promise you, we will name the projects better than FY 21 various streets in the future. Okay? But anyway, so yeah, this is just the final closeout step so that we can begin doing all of our final preparations to close out as built, things like that.
Can I make a suggestion for next year? Just call it fiscal year 22 assorted streets?
Yes.
Real good defining. So this is the, you needed to have us agree to the increase last period to close this period.
Correct. So we had you verify, allow us to spend the funds to close. And then this is the last step so we can file with the county and say the project is complete. And we can basically put all the suppliers on notice that if they haven't been paid, they don't release their claim to lien the project. And then, once we get releases from them saying that they've been paid in full, we will then begin the process to release the retention. So it's the 5% that we keep to guarantee they pay their subs and things like that.
In addition to the names, can you promise to not make us, you know, see plus 53.94% next time?
I will do everything in my power...
I would rather you say no because you're going to do the right thing rather than try to just make a number right.
I'm going to do everything in my power to do the legwork upfront so you will never see a number like that again.
I'm teasing you. I was making the point that there's nothing wrong with the plus. Somebody's going to gravitate to the plus 53%, right? It's going to happen, you know? Of course, it's out there. It was 53% over budget. No, it wasn't. It was completed properly. That's the difference. The plus or minus on a percentage of a budget, if you go into a street that was designed in the 19, what was the, 60s?
There was two streets that were done in 41. They were done by the county previous to us.
Okay. So you open up a street that was designed in 1941, you have two choices. I can stay on budget and not fix it, or I can be 53.94% over. And guess what? I made sure that the infrastructure is fixed properly. That's what I want the community to hear and understand is everyone loves to gravitate to numbers and create narratives. There's no narrative here beyond one, which is that our Public Works Department chose to do the right thing to make sure that we had the best infrastructure in place rather than doing the easy thing, which is to just glaze over the problem.
We want it to last. We don't want it to look pretty. We want it to last. Oh, we do want it to look pretty, but you know what I mean.
You're going to have to work a lot harder.
Yep. No comments.
Any other comments? Nope. Okay. No other council comments? Is there any comments from the floor? Okay. So it's not on this topic, and I will be happy to, because again, I want to address a member of the public that has a question. Ms. Breeden's comments, we cannot agendize a committee that's specifically related to elections. However, again, any one of us, our emails, our phone numbers are out there. We would, any one of us would always be happy to meet or speak with a member of the public. And I'm sure that Peggy will have something out shortly that invites people to come have, probably it'll be a beer with Kyle and coffee with Peggy. But the bottom line is to come out and just talk to us. I mean, my phone number's out there, Kyle's. Just talk to us. Let us know that you have an interest in the community. So does that answer your question, ma'am? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment in relations to item number six? Okay, hearing none. None on the phones. We'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of action item number six?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Martin, I didn't get myself in trouble there, did I?
No, you're not. You're doing fine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next is item number seven, discussion regarding the board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was not at the last groundwater authority meeting. I was representing the groundwater authority in Sacramento. And we, Chairman Peters and myself attended a check awarding ceremony in Sacramento where we received a $7.6 million check from the Department of Water Resources. So on my behalf, Peggy Breeden attended the meeting, and so we will let her report out from that meeting.
Okay, I'll report on the action items. There was some discussion about how the progress reports are done. And the item was requested that it be done not by staff so much as, and approved by the board, and then sent out. But it was an item that's going to be on the next agenda, that staff will repair, will prepare it, and that the board will approve it. And it will be addressed before it goes back out to any other agencies with public having the time to comment. So it's going to be on the next agenda. There is another item, the wastewater treatment facility. We are $5 million short of where we need to be in it. And we asked the, our Senator Groves and Assemblyman Fong to, for their help to go to the state and ask for approval of monies to continue our efforts. And they all did it, as well as Kern County. And we are waiting for the response from our staff to what the, if they had any questions or where we're going to go with that. There was board discussion on the possible abandonment of the following program. Nothing, there was long, long discussion, huge hours worth. But there was no action taken on that item. So it may come back, it may not. I don't know where we are with that. There was the discussion of the $7.6 million that was awarded. And you will, you've already referred to that, and it's been all in the news. I would like to tell you that there was, there was an approval for request for proposal for pipeline alignment to, for imported water. And it was approved and sent to staff to do that and come back with proposals and develop the process of doing that. The last item was, that was the last action item. So after that, I know that, Scott, you wanted to talk a little bit about some items. And did you want to address any more? I had asked you about the following program is, there was, the discussion was, was it going to be the reason? If it happened, who was going to be responsible for the dust mitigation? Who was going to pay for it? How it was going to happen if farms were fallowed and there was no action? And there was a great deal of discussion. And I had reminded them that we have the East Kern Air Pollution Control District because they, their job is to make sure we offer mitigation for those kind of things. Should people be impacted by blowing sand or whatever? And it seems to me that the discussion went along the lines of, well, gee, this isn't just the property owner's responsibility. It should be everyone's responsibility. And again, I reminded them, the East Kern Air Pollution Control District and the East Kern County Resource Conservation District had already developed plans for that. So they are going, I think, the possible, is they're going to look at that and see where it goes.
Okay, very good. The only thing I'd add in regards to the following program is that initially the following program was, you know, presented as a means to go in and purchase farms and to be able to, along with that, that would reduce pumping in the basin. And so, and it was, felt the Water District was probably the group to, you know, oversee that and take the reins of it. But, you know, for reasons of their own, you know, they chose, you know, not to pursue that following program. And so with the dust mitigation would have been a, you know, possible outcome, you know, or an issue that would, you know, may come about, you know, with the following of the land. But so at this point, it's just, my understanding is it's just idle. So we're, I guess, put on the back burner at this point in time. So the other thing, the only other thing I have to add is there was a meeting last night with the Department of Water Resources, Stan Tech Consulting, and the Indian Wells Valley Water District. There were numerous, well, other council members present, myself representing the GA. So, I mean, overall, I'm happy to say that the groundwater authorities GSP has been approved. And so we were one of a small handful of GSPs that were approved by the state. They kind of broke it down last night. You know, we have corrective actions that we're working on. Those corrective actions are just recommendations and that we are working with DWR to improve upon. They broke it down last night into, you know, different levels of their, they kind of went over the passages of the GSPs and, you know, those that, the requirements for, you know, passing, those that were not passed, and those that were sent straight to state water resource. So it's, I think, very nice to say that we, you know, we were in that small handful of GSPs that were passed. The state has awarded us a $7.6 million implementation grant to begin with implementation of recycled, or the recycled water project and the imported water. So the GA continues to move forward in those areas. And I'll be happy to report back to you as we put more definitive work into the actual projects themselves. So I believe that's all I have. If anyone else has any comments they'd like to bring up, feel free.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Sol. What's that, Mr. Mayor?
I said we can always count on Kyle for one.
Yep, yep, probably. I have a few. The first one is a lot of folks are asking, because you went up to Sacramento, appreciate you doing that for the Groundwater Authority, that money, that seven plus million dollars, where is that going to go, that 7.6? What's the purpose of it? So it's coming to the Groundwater Authority, and now what?
It's going towards the plan and design of an imported water project, the infrastructure that's needed for that.
Right. And I think I need to state, because you know, a lot of times the public doesn't catch, I think they'll catch our conversations and pieces, right? So I think we talk about it because we know how things are going. So just let me reiterate, I was just making a note here. That plan is for the future of the city, and that needs to be underlined a few times. There's really only one way this town is going to grow in any way, shape, or form, even if it's just small organically. At some point, it's maybe even not growth, and that is to import water. And so this is the beginning of it. And as much as I, nobody likes seeing tax dollars wasted, right? But this is important, right? So the community needs to understand that as difficult as this is, it needs to be done. And I was also at that meeting last night, and I heard a lot of, just comments that were disjointed with the direction of the Groundwater Authority and the city and the county and the rest of the counties that are involved with the Groundwater Authority. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, if you're watching this meeting and you want to understand, at least where this one council member sits, it's that we need to look out for the future of this town. There's only one way to do that. And there's one major employer we're all trying to take care of, and I think we know it. So the following discussion, that's gone on a few times now, like at length. I think the meeting before this, it was a lengthy discussion. Is it just going to be, are you guys just going to drop it now? Is it going to not be discussed anymore? Or is it just kind of in the hands of the Water District? Do you, I mean, I'm just asking your opinion.
Probably both, you know. It is the hands of the Water District. They could move forward on it. And at this time, it is, I would say, technically shelved because of lack of motion on their part.
Thank you. And Peggy, you mentioned the East Kern Air Pollution District. Do you need me as our representative on that board to go and have some discussions with the district?
I used to serve on that board also, and that is, Glenn will tell you, the manager of it, will tell you that the property owner is the responsible party for pollution to... to cover it, fix it, mitigate it, whatever can be done and they approve it if, if they do. And it seems to me to try to make all of us pay for that is inappropriate. And if that's the case, then every, every pollution source ought to be cheering and saying, great, I can do whatever I want, the people are going to pay for it. Not possible, not appropriate. My personal opinion, thank you.
Go ahead for a moment.
In the last council meeting, Councilman Blades had a question, not a question, wanted a clarification about deficiencies. So from yesterday's meeting, it is very clear there are no deficiencies in the GSP approved. It is approved and it is a done deal. So they said it is substant, it is in substantial compliance of the requirements. And also they said there are seven areas identified to be met, which is the recommendations, which are to be ongoing. And then, and he also said, no plan is perfect. So, and we have five years, which will be by the end of January 31st, 2025, to review the plan again. And he mentioned it is a moving target, if things change, whatever we are doing, probably we may have to amend. So I just want the public to know what has happened yesterday. So, I mean, people are thinking, we are moving, not we, I'm sorry, GA is moving ahead with the project, but depending on the details GA has right now, so that is what they are supposed to do, I think. So if something changes, if we find a lot of the overdraft going down, probably that's a different direction we will go once it is reviewed. So am I saying this correct? Councilman.
In regard, in regards to the corrective actions, so the, in the previous GA meeting, they went over the different corrective actions and are being very proactive in addressing those currently. So they're being addressed now and, and so that when there is a review of the GSP down the road, we will be able to show that, you know, we are actively and have worked on any of the corrective actions that, you know, DWR had put into our GSP.
I also read in the newspaper today, GA called for RFPs. So what is RFP for? Do you know anything about that?
I don't.
It was, it was a request for proposals for alignment for the pipeline and the alignment thereof. For imported water.
Assessment based on.
Like an initial screening, I think?
Yeah. For AVAC versus, versus DWP versus.
Wherever, yeah.
How many people are going to have to be arm twisted to get into a conversation? And all of the distances, the costs, the functionality, the feasibility, all of the aspects of getting water to us.
Yeah, the, the RFP is correlated with the $7.6 billion grant. It is the request for proposal for the planning document to identify the path and the methodology that imported water will be brought to the community.
So I also read we are preferring AV instead of LA water, something like that?
Yeah, the path that was chosen was through AVAC.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's the path, that's the most probable project that, that we have and obviously that's part of the, the RFP process.
Thank you, sir.
Since you, you went with the RFP, I'm going to just go and address another, you know, question that came out of the Water District meeting and I have not watched it yet, so I'm not stating with facts or if there's going to be some fill in here. I mean, I respect the Water District's request to be involved in the process of, of releasing numbers, but this, this feels like it's just grandizing that if they don't approve the numbers, then they don't have to stand behind the numbers of the GA. I'm asking if I'm interpreting this the right way or the wrong way.
In regard, in regards to, say, the 7650?
In regards to the 7650, yeah, that, that essentially, there's, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm in a raw talking sort of mood today. There's a contention that, you know, is the amount of overdraft not or accurate or inaccurate? The GSP is approved, we've submitted the numbers, everything that we had in terms of study numbers. There's a contention argument whether this number is good, that number is bad, and it sounds like the Water District, and I'm, I'm asking because I haven't watched it, it sounds like the Water District is saying, well, we're not going to, you're going to have to run all your numbers by us for approval, is kind of what they're asking us and that, asking the GA, and that doesn't make any sense. I mean, you guys do your studies, you have your agencies, you have your firms that are doing all their studies. It, it doesn't sound like that we, our, our studies would be beholden to a single or, a organization or agency in, in the Water District. I understand they have expertise and they should be chiming in and participating with the GA in the process and I hope they do and continue to, but I don't think we're going, the GA is not going to suddenly make themselves beholden to the, the Water District's approved water numbers.
I think you might be referring to the annual report. I know there was a request by Director Rotora that that item be brought back to the board for approval before submittal to the DWR. And I know that the staff has been given direction to come back to the board for a direction, so that, that's going to be a matter that's going to be on next month.
That is absolutely correct. Okay, next month. I'm going to hold until next month.
Yeah, I got a question, Scott. So I know you were there and I just wanted to, how you interpreted, it was nice to hear. So first, let me just say, I didn't say this before, it, I, I liked that the meeting was facilitated. Yes, I have the general question, where is this going since we're in the middle of an adjudication, so I, I'm sure everybody else said the same question, but it was good to facilitate such a thing. That, now that that's out of the way, the DWR did state that they would assist with data gaps. I don't know what that means for the groundwater authority or the Water District or both agencies. And I'm sure there, there are, we all agree that there are data gaps. I mean, that's the process, right? That's, uh, that's the world we live in. So does that mean they will give you direct assistance? They're going to assist the groundwater? And I say you as in our representative on the groundwater authority and I don't know if you've had, you probably even had a chance to talk to the chair or anybody else, but, or the staff or the manager.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll, we'll review it in, in the next meeting or shortly after, but they didn't really elaborate on what, you know, providing assistance in data gaps would consist of. So they did make that statement last night and is it, so I don't, I really couldn't make that much out of it.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, just as an example of, like a data gap would be the SkyTim data that they supported and that the, the Water District contracted out and they got the results back on that. You know, there are, you know, questions on the El Paso. I know that the Water District is looking at drilling some wells in that area to figure out what the groundwater basin is in the El Paso. So I know the Water District is continuing to collect data, whether or not the GA identifies data gaps over the next five years and then puts a funding request in to identify any, any, any areas that we feel that might help with identifying the basin any further with how we move forward. But I think it's fairly clear that there's been probably three or four decades of information that has, that is at hand, that has put us as a critically overdrafted basin. So we know that, you know, we do not have surface water that flows in to the valley. Our only source of water is the basin. And so obviously, I understand that a little bit further may help with how much we believe is a natural recharge, but at the end of the day, when you look at all the numbers, in my opinion, we still are going to need imported water to be able to support this town, to be able to support our number of employer, which is the base. How much water we, we're going to need for importation may be a question, but we're still going to need to have a pipe built and installed to have imported water in the future.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how we get around it, just for property development. I mean, if you, if you own property in this town, which a lot of us do, this, this directly affects, I mean, not just the growth, not just for businesses to pop up, but I mean, if you, if you want to develop a piece of land that's sitting out in the county right now, I mean, the future of that's in jeopardy. And yeah, I mean, 100 years is not that long, it's not that much of a time, that's, that's a generation. That's your kids growing up. It's the future of, so yeah, things seem hard and they seem difficult right now and I got to keep, I mean, you're, you're close to it, right? So you're, you're in it all the time, so I know it sounds like I'm, I'm a broken record, but I can't say this enough, that it's, it's the difficult things that are going to have to be done. We're going to say things that people don't like and it's going to have to do with the cost of this. I don't like it, I'm a taxpayer, I pay my water bill, I pay the replenishment fee, I pay the, I pay my fees, I don't like paying it, it's like anybody else, but we got it, we got to do it, it's got to be done. Otherwise, our future doesn't look as bright as a.
Yeah, we cannot conserve our way out of this issue. And I, and I think that, that all the studies have shown that eventual, that imported water is our path and anything else, I mean, I understand that you continue to look at the basin, see what the El Paso, but really at the end of the day, it's been fairly clear where we have to go. Now we can try and recover water from the wastewater treatment facility that we can bring back to the community, but even with that, there's still not going to be enough water for us to be able to continue to grow as a community if we choose to.
I think when you look at the, even last night, when they, when they keep wanting to bring up that number of 7650, you know, that we're closer to 7650 instead of the, you know, the previous numbers that the, that, you know, the data has shown, even at that number, you don't have to be mathematician to figure out that if it's 7650 that we're overdrafted, that's still 100% overdraft in this valley. And if you look at the pumpers that, you know, to, the two major pumpers that pump over 76, you know, over 7650, the two together pump almost twice that amount. So how can you come up with the math that, you know, that with the, the basin as a whole, the city, the county, the naval base and, and Trona and, and in your current, if you look at the water that's necessary to provide for all those areas, that uses up a great amount of that 7650. So like City Manager Ron Stram is saying, you, it only leaves us in a, in a position to need imported water. And so, but that number, you can't have two pumpers that pump twice as much as the, you know, close, say close, I'm not going to give the exact numbers, but close to twice as much as that natural recharge and come up with only a 7650 overdraft. Those numbers don't crunch.
So I got a question and, and again, I'm asking this mostly for the public because I have, I've read through the GSP and I try to pay attention to every single meeting you guys have, but I think it was important because it was mentioned last night to bring up here and that is, is there, is there an option to like have decel, salinization plants put in to, you know, because you have a large amount of the basin that's briny, briny water. I think a lot of it's up in the northwest on the base, there's a lot of brine water, not that that's ever going to be an option, but is that, has that been discussed at some point to assist in the freshwater?
So the brackish water project? So it's been discussed, it's a very expensive proposal. I think you could ask that question to the Water District and ask them how much that project would cost and if it's feasible. You still have the, the issue with groundwater storage lowering, chronic lowering of the storage in the basin. So whether you're using potable water or, you know, water with lower TDS amounts that, you know, can be currently used or you get into the brackish water, it's pumping water out of the basin. You're pumping, you're lowering the storage. So is that a long-term fix? In my opinion, no.
No, not when we see.
And for growth of the city, you know, growth of everybody that's reliant upon the water, doesn't seem like a viable solution in my opinion, but.
It's just an in-basin solution. If you're desalinated water on the range, oh, you're, you're still lowering the groundwater table basin, you're just shifting the water around, you may be able to do that for a while, but at the end of the day, it's still an in-basin, it's still not new water.
And, you know, I, one of the things I want to add too is, you know, we, we get a lot of input from folks, you know, saying, well, it's going to cost too much money or we should do this and, and put it, put it off basically, you know, stall, stall, stall is basically, you know, one of the more common approaches that we hear. And you got to look at it from the big picture, from where we are today, where we were, you know, decades ago and where will we be in 40 years or 50 years or 75 years? By not doing anything, the risks and the costs, that's what we, that's what we have to face, is the risks and costs of not doing anything now. And what do we, what, what are the risks and costs if we do something now? Well, one, we, we, we come up with a sustainable plan that ensures the water security of this valley for the future and then the one negative is cost. So it is going to cost money, but the net outcome, it's the direction that this city, that this basin needs to be going. Waiting, you look at these other basins and they, they mentioned it last night, we were one of, you know, 24, we're one of the, I guess, eight that were approved basins and in, under the critically overdrafted category. All these other basins, you know, if you looked at those numbers last night, there was 250, you know, 500 basin, so there's all these other basins that are coming on, into this picture now. We're on the kind of that spearhead leading edge of it. So for us to not take advantage of move, forward movement on this right now, I think is detrimental to, to our valley, to the city, to, to everyone involved. And the costs are going to be atrocious years down the road. I mean, look at how much things have gone up in the past 10 years to, you know, for construction costs, look how much they've gone up in the last. Yes, in, in the short term. And so I think it would be astronomical, not to mention the big white elephant in the room is, water availability is more than likely going to go down, down, down and the price is going to go up, up, up. So being able to purchase water, we don't jump on it now, there's going to be all these other hundreds of basins coming in with a lot bigger budgets and revenues than what we have in our area and I think the cost of water will only go up if you can even get it. So.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, I just want to, you know, we always bring, we bring up the discussion items so we can make sure that the public and then you as our representative understand where we are coming from as a council and where we hope you're driving towards, where the groundwater authority, what we hope they're moving towards. And I hope, I've imparted upon you that I hope that our direction is, yes, gather the data, be, be factual, be methodical. I want, I want the groundwater authority to be methodical and to take care of the taxpayer absolutely as best they can. Be as transparent as you can. I, I believe that you're doing that. It's complicated, so a lot of people don't feel that, so I get that, I understand. It's worth asking questions, it's worth showing up to meetings, it's worth calling your representative to, it's not easy to wrap your head around, I'm involved in it all the time otherwise, you know? So I want to make sure that you understand like that's my drive as one council member and then, and as a secondary. I hope that, I hope that you guys are working towards a good solution to get water imported as much as it's a horrible, it's a, it's a horrible option, but it's the option.
Another thing I'd like to add too is that, you know, with that meeting last night, it's a facilitation, but, you know, if one of the outcomes they could have is to facilitate a quickening of the adjudication and, you know, a, an end result of that in a, in a faster manner, that would be a positive thing that, you know, we could look maybe, you know, toward from the, the process, but, so.
It would be a positive, but I don't understand, all of us are involved in a lawsuit right now, what are we supposed to talk about?
Not much, not much about the lawsuits.
Yeah, I would just, you know, I don't know, and the lawsuit ties tying up the water and I just, okay.
I'd like to make a few comments about the meeting last night and remember that we were there attending as ourselves. There was four of us there, nobody.
There was five of us there on video.
Nobody addressed anything and we, our job was, if we were asked, we had all thought, we're here to listen, we're not going to make comments. I'd like to make some comments now. I was very disappointed in the Department of Water Resources and their responses to what they said. To me, it was almost, I'm going to use the word mealy-mouthed answers that they gave us, because instead of saying, we approved the plan, well, they said they checked off everything. Well, there was a thousand pages they said they read, there was nine issues that they had and those issues are being addressed. And so rather than say that, those things, they went off to say over and over again, we didn't approve it, we didn't approve those actions, we didn't, but we approved the plan. So you tell me what that really means, I don't understand it. Was, if the job of the, of the Department of Water Resources and the facilitator, who I thought did a really good job, if that was to be able to set up a potential for settlement of the adjudication and discuss it, God bless them, they did a great job. If it was to muddy the waters, they did a perfect job because they gave no answers, they simply said, this is not the way it is. So in order to say they approved the plan, but. So in order to say they approved the plan, but they didn't approve the plan, the options, they had some concerns, I was very disappointed when they could have said, "This is what we did, we approved it, there are some things that need to be done, you have 180 days to answer it, you have five years to begin the corrective processes that we have, may have identified." Not fair, not right, and I think it was inappropriate. Now, let me say this. Those people that were, that were talking about, and let me say it as strongly as when I was chair of that organization and had served on it, the Department of Resources and Mr. Gutierrez was referred to as leader of it at that time, he said to us, "You may not use what you have in the basin to achieve sustainability. That is not how you do it. Treating brackish water in the basin solves the problem, maybe, with great cost, additional water supply, but it doesn't achieve sustainability." When they give you that criteria and say imported water then is the only way we're going to get additional water and not from treating water we have, that doesn't fix our basin. If we look at that and constantly remember what they told us, unless they told us a lie, was that wrong? Was he incorrect? I doubt it. He was the head of the Department of Water Resources, and he said, "This is the way the GSA is. Our attorneys looked at it, listened to them, and agreed with them. You do not achieve sustainability with water in the basin, and if we only have 40 more years of water, depending what it is, those people are..." I, I own a business in this community, many people do, and if we are going to grow this community, we have to have sustainability so you can pay off your businesses, pay off the houses you're building, grow this community with the water that we have and need. Now, if I'm wrong anywhere here, I would appreciate if somebody would tell me, and I would like the Water District to be able to respond to those things, because I want to work together. It is our job to work together with everybody. It is our job to find solutions, and our, not our job to take potshots at each other. And I think some of that was done last night, perhaps unintentionally, perhaps to, to make a point, but I want answers. And it is wrong to ask for answers from the Department of Water Resources? Forgive me, but that's their job to answer us, and not say we just approved it because we hit, they hit the, the marks. I, if I'm wrong, anybody disagree with me? Anyone want to correct me? Anyone want to say, "They did a fine job"?
I am not going to disagree with you, but I'm going to highlight two things that they said that help with the situation maybe just a bit. First, they said that in 2016, when that, when Sequoia was passed into law, it was the first major water law for this state of California in over 100 years.
Yep.
So to Mr. Blade's point, to your point, to everyone's point, the can had been kicked to death, and whether we like it or dislike it, state law forced us to finally address a sustainability problem that this community has known it has had for decades and had done nothing about.
Way too long.
The second is they also very clearly said, "You don't really want the Department of Water Resources dealing with your GSP. It's designed to be local. We've done it locally. We've been working on this thing for five, six years now. We are well down the line. I thank the Department of Water Resources for coming in and facilitating it. I appreciate them coming down and addressing people's concerns, but I believe, and I hope that they see too, that we have made such progress in this, this process that let us continue down the road that we are already working so successfully on." I understand there will be a difference of opinion, especially amongst people in terms of how much water or where the water is, and, you know, if there wasn't disagreement, it wouldn't be Richcrest.
Gutierrez told us, I don't mean to interrupt, but let me just make two points. Gutierrez told us that if we don't find the solution, they will, and they told us again last night, and not only will they say, "You will shut off your water if we tell you to," farmers, be careful of the guy that's going to come and save your soul, because they aren't. And they're going to charge us more than we would be able to do it, because they're going to do it for us. Please let us find our solution locally, because we work together to make it happen.
Well, that was fun.
Okay.
We love water. Okay, is there any public comment on water? None on the phones. I would have to have you, I, I can, I can, I can, if you can speak up, I can try and reiterate what you said, just because it would be public record. Did you have something you wanted to... Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were trying to get up, and I didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that we, I wanted to make sure we made it accessible to you. Sorry. Okay. Okay, moving on to, thank you for our wonderful discussion, that was, that was fun. Item, next item is committee reports. We have City Org, Finance and Economic Development. I'm going to grab City Org if you don't mind, Peggy's, just, just out of the gate. So City Org, we, City Org has a, a nice little list of old business, okay? And here's just a few of the highlights on the old business. Trash and fire contract, okay? Two massive issues that we have taken very proactive steps to already through the first half of this year. As we get into June, we're going to be starting to talk about the back half of this year. I talked about that today, Rotary. We already have tackled those issues, and they're on our old business, because we're continuing to monitor it. We're getting very close to completing our, our agreement with Waste Management, and we'll be able to see that very soon, and progress continues on those two fronts positively. But then there was this older, old business item, which was a thing called Civic Drive, okay? And this is called a good idea that goes through committee and then gets a, a negative, not a negative, a, a less than positive response, because it wasn't negative, it was, it was, it was a great response, and it led to a great discussion. So one of my ideas had been to alter the name of East Los Flores to Civic Drive, and something I had been working towards, and the idea of building that entire area with the, with the potential judicial buildup, with the Clean California work, all these things to build up that area as some type of a hub for Eastern Kern. I, I've always said that one of the challenges that we face as a community is that we are a part of an incredible county in Kern County, but if I asked 10 people, five of them would, would, would say we were the redhead's stepchild of Kern County. Maybe more than five. And I've always said that one of the problems that, that has caused that is because we don't stand up for ourselves and make ourselves look like the kings of East County, of East Kern. And I want that to be, if we are the hub and we are the population center of East Kern, then let's start acting like we are the population and the hub center of East Kern, and that was the goal. Well, they didn't really like the idea of Civic Drive. But it led to another idea, and I don't know if it's going to play out, and I can't tell you how it's going to look, but we're going to continue to meet on this, and everybody and the public, please join us on the second, the first Thursday of each month, that's our City Org meeting. We'd love your inputs. Input leads to results, and that was, maybe we shift around to doing Wayfinder signage and doing some other, maybe an Arts and Cultural District or some other things to, to raise that area up in order to bring it onto maps, and I, I mean, onto GPS and points of interest and all those types of things. And I just want to, you know, offer to the China Lake Museum and to Mataringa Museum, thank you for coming back and giving us ideas. The bottom line is, we can have the best ideas in the world, and if no citizen ever comes in, participates and gives us feedback, then it, it leads us coming to you and saying, "Hey, we got this great idea," and you going, "No," and we go, "Okay, what idea do you have?" And that's what we got out of it, it was great. So I just want to, that was the gist of City Org. It was all about Civic Drive and having the conversations about what potentials were there, and please come back. Again, all of these things are about branding the community, or branding areas of the community in order to draw greater tourism, greater attention to the incredible resources that this community has, and so thank you for that participation. Is there anything else on City Org?
You did a good job.
Okay. And I am not killing Civic Drive, but it is deader than, it's not dead, but it's on life support. That's what I'll say to Barbara Bain and Libby and them. It was, it was fun, and, and we really do appreciate it. Next was Finance Committee. Councilman Hayman was up in Sacramento, and Councilman Roger Rotnum joined me. I can tell you that I'd love to see you again here next Wednesday night at 5:30 PM for our budget hearing. If you don't think that's probably the one or two most important meetings of the year to attend, it is. We'd love to see you out here. I'm very excited to see what our budget has. I know that we have throughout the course of the Finance Committee meetings reiterated things that we have expectations on and things that we, we really want to see pushing forward. The great part is that, as I said to, I said at the Rotary meeting, the city's finances are not going to look like we're in crisis, because we're not from a crisis perspective. What we are is we cannot do the things that we need to do if we don't have greater local-controlled funding to do those things. And that boils down to public safety, and it boils down to our, our fire contract that we know is coming up, 1.7 million, our police department, which we know we have needs, we have staffing, we've got needs, and so I want to stress, as we go into this budget conversation, the city is improving, and, and our property taxes and our sales tax reflect that, but they are still far short of addressing the absolute needs that are coming down the pipe and the absolute wants of this community, and things of that nature. They, we can't do what you want and solve the problems without a greater resource of revenue, and right now, we have put the, and I commend, I mean, guys, anybody wants to go really, come to a finance meeting and let me just let you see the general fund reserve circa 2011, 2012, all the way until 2016, and then even up from 2018 to 2022, and ask yourself whether we are in a stronger financial position today than we were. We are, but that does not leave us at the position to be able to do much. All we've done has been able to recover from what happened in 20, in, in, in the fallout of 2009, really. That's really all that's occurred over 13 years. But over 13 years, wastewater plants, pipes, police forces, staffing, inflation, there, we got a lot of other things we got to deal with, and I'm very proud of our finance department and what we're going to be able to deliver, but at the end of the day, we are still far short of the revenue that we need in order to properly address the needs of this community. So, did you have anything to add? Economic development was canceled, so yeah, I got to give all the committee reports. Other committees, boards, and commissions?
You have Kern Cog, of course. I have Kern Cog.
And the BLM Roundtable coming up, and I already had the East Kern Pollution Board, that was earlier, so, but I'm going to circle back around with Mr. Stevens. So thank you for that, Peggy.
Thank you.
I apologize that I'm mic on. So RACVB met this morning. Should I, no, Solomon's got it. Solomon's got it.
The revenues, they're steady, but last week it went down a little bit because one group did not come, which came previous year, and then the tourism numbers are steady, more international travel, and then there was one traveler from UK, he spent two days in Richcrest, he was very impressed with the California Welcome Center. So, and then Kerry is working with Death Valley and Sequoia National Park to make it more at, so that people can go from here to Death Valley and Sequoia, and then she's also working with Kennedy Meadows, take our information there, and then, see, Welcome Center had two children field trips, and, I'm sorry, I thought Megan would be here, so. And then there is an event coming up, Navy Symposium, I think it's in September, they are expecting 400 people to attend that, and other than that, their finances are doing Kerry attended a leadership roundtable in Kern County, in Bakersfield, and she was surprised to see Congressman Kevin McCarthy there, so she was excited on that. And then she is, she also traveled to California Welcome Center in Ontario Mills, they're trying to coordinate and have more information in other California Welcome Centers about She's planning for a open house next year where she can invite other California Welcome Centers. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. For myself, East Kern Economic Alliance met last week. I apologize I was not able to make it. I apologize I did not shut this off, and so it's beeping. Okay. I apologize, my son's getting ready for his first communion, and, and he's trying to reach out to daddy. My apologies, I will be there soon, Grant. Any other boards or commissions for you guys? I think we covered them all. Okay. City Manager report.
Yeah, it's just a couple items. As you noticed when you drove in tonight, you can see that our Public Works crew is slurry sealing our parking lot, so we're hoping to be able to maintain and slurry seal the entire parking lot. We have done nothing to that over the last 30 years, so it's sorely needed. Other topic is, is it, it looks like we are looking at applying for a Defense Community Infrastructure Program grant. It appears we might qualify for a project, one that we're looking at would be to put artificial turf at the Kern McGee Ballfields. So I've assigned Megan to look into that, I know she's working with John Kursley on that. We do believe that, that the skipper may be able to provide a support letter. Obviously, it's still kind of early, the application will be due in July, so the thought would be is to bring it back to the Quality Life meeting in June to be able to discuss a little bit further. But I think it, I do believe we, there's like three areas that are covered in the grant. We believe, at least initially, that we might, that might touch on all three of those, so there may be some viability to that, so we can, you know, give a shot. One of the benefits would be, obviously, it would add for additional use for the fields, because we wouldn't have to let them rest, it'd be artificial turf, and we'd also be able to save, you know, a significant amount of water that we use for those fields every year, so there would be a resiliency aspect to it. Nerissa's reached out to a vendor, one of the things we would be including in that would be some sort of cooling system that would be available if those fields were used when it was a little warm, we'd be able to cool them off before the kids got on the, on the field. So we'll cover more, or we'll talk about it more during Quality Life, but I just want to let you know that that was something that, that's come up and that we're looking at. And that's all I have for tonight. The mayor already covered the budget meeting next Wednesday, so...
Well, just a reminder that we'd love to see the public here next Wednesday at 5:30 for our budget hearing.
One other thing, we are heading off to ICSE on Sunday. We do have a very busy schedule for that conference. We are focusing this time on trying to find some retail businesses that can fill Kmart. And so we're looking at five or six businesses, we're in touch with the property manager, so we're hoping that we'll be able to guide that project forward. We'll see. That's all I have.
And let me just reiterate the, the most important thing that I think Mr. Strand said, which is, I suppose the waiting around, we're looking for opportunities. We're looking for those opportunities to make the community better, and I'm sure there will be somebody says, "Turf? We don't want turf. I want $3.1 million to make our community as good as humanly possible." And putting in turf in the middle of the desert where it costs a ton of water to water, and we're in the middle, we just spent 45 minutes discussing water, good on you, keep it up. That's what we're... That's what we're loving to hear because these are the type of grants that are going to make Richcrest better over time. Future agenda items, any future agenda items? Gentlemen? Ladies? None? Mayor and council comments, I started there at the end. For this time, we're going to go to Kyle to start this time. You're going to get to say no, good night.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it quick. I don't usually have comments, but I just want to reiterate a few things that I've said in past meetings. That is, I think we're on the cusp of something, right? I'm not trying to overstate it, right? It's not, nothing revolutionary, but we do see the direction of Richcrest changing a slight bit. We're, we're seeing growth in a way I don't think we've seen it in the past. We see, we see a staff that's probably always worked overtime, but they're doing amazing things and we're seeing a city council working together and moving forward, even if we have disagreements every once in a while, so, which is the way it's supposed to be, right?
It's not supposed to be.
That's how it's supposed to be. I think we just need to make sure the public's paying attention to these changes and that we make a conscious effort to decide where it is we want to go and what we want to look like. And that's not cryptic, that's, I, I mean that genuinely. What do we want the city of Richcrest to look like? And that question, of course, it's always tied to water, but it's, it's tied to everything else. So I just needed to reiterate that. It's in the support, it's in the people you vote for, right? We have, when are we voting? When is that, June 7th? 7th, right? So June 7th is coming right up. Every vote counts, please get out and vote, it's important. We know what Richcrest has looked like in the past, and that's not to say it was a bad thing, right? But data, data's been collected on the water situation since I think it was 1914, is that the first piece of data that was picked up? And I think even at that time, they showed water being lost out of this basin. So let's, let's pay attention and be cognizant of where we're going. That's all I got.
Just want to say, we are able to do all these great things in our Richcrest great city because we have great staff, great department heads in Travis Reed, Nerissa and Sherry. So they do an excellent job. So thank you very much for all your thing.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We've got to say Jed, if he's listening out there, we're in trouble.
No comments.
Well, I only have a couple of quick ones, you know, I'm always good for a good laugh at the end. First and foremost is welcome Chipotle. I didn't see the line quite like Panda, but I'm, and I hope that that's because we are in California and, 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 you know.
We're over.
Oh, was? Okay, was it at lunch hour? I, I just, maybe I, oh, that's right, I haven't been getting home till midnight, so that's why I haven't seen it.
I went on Saturday, it was 45 minutes late.
It was what?
It was big on the internet.
Bottom line is, welcome to our community, we're happy to have you, and we, and, and we love bringing more fast casual to our community, which is great. Two, thank you to everyone who continues to be involved in communication and information. And I got a, at Rotary today, I heard a great compliment and I wanted to, you know, share it with Travis, even though he's a potty mouth. The bottom line here is that, one, somebody said, "I had a problem on my street and I called Travis and within 24 hours, the problem was addressed." Thank you, sir. That reputational difference to this community matters and we appreciate you for doing that because it is making a reputation, reputational difference in our community. The difference is that when you stop arguing and you start trying to adapt to the change that exists, the fact is that Richcrest has changed. Richcrest will continue to change, and the longer that we resist either arguing about water or not wanting to do infrastructure or not wanting to control our own destiny, the longer we put ourselves at risk. The more we wait on Bakersfield, Sacramento or Washington DC to solve our problems, the longer we will not have the ability to take care of the local problems that we understand, we know where they are, and we are the best people enabled to make those, those changes and to make those changes to make a better community. We are on that road, momentum is with us. I invite the community to join us, me and everyone else here next Wednesday, hear more about what we're positively moving forward with in fiscal year 22, 23. It is good, it's not bad, guys. There's more positive coming than there is negative and it's about time we start to remind ourselves that the glass is not half empty, it's half full. Everyone have a great evening. God bless you, Richcrest, we'll see you next week.